Bring tonight's April 3rd Tuolumne County Planning Commission meeting to order. If you could please stand and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, we will first start with any reports from commissioners. No reports, we'll go to staff. Any reports for us?
Mr. Chairman, we have some correspondence from one of the planning commissioners that I'd like to discuss here briefly. We have a letter here and I'm wondering if you'd pass these out, Larry, to the rest of the commissioners?
No, I, when I forward it to Terran, I ask that to be distributed by staff.
We have copies here. Let me pass them out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We will have, hopefully, some clerical support here momentarily, but we're winging it. Did you get that turned on? Okay. So, we have some correspondence from one of our planning commissioners, Commissioner Bile, requesting some information be redacted on our applications and stuff. I've spoken with county council about it and we have removed his information as requested. And there was also a, another request for a county email and I've spoken with our council as well as our IT department. And my recommendation is, is also county council's recommendation, is I speak with you all individually. If there's any special way you'd like correspondence coming to you, any emails like that, please let me know. At this time, there will be no county emails set up for the planning commissioners. One of the suggestions from our IT department is to set up a Yahoo account or Gmail or whatever with, you know, District 231, whatever it is, or Open Seat at that extension that you want. And we happily put that on here as well. I think I've covered everything. And if any of the commissioners have any concern about any of their information, I can cover that as well privately with you. So, I wanted to give you that and cover those. And I think that's all the reports I have from staff's perspective at this time.
Thank you.
My speed reading may be not quite good enough, but so, I understand that in the past occasionally I would get a telephone call from some random person that found me through the, that found me through the, through the county website. That will no longer happen under this new set of things.
If you request that.
Okay, so it will unless I request it. So, it's an opt-out situation?
Yes.
Okay.
And I'd suggest that all of you will just have that discussion, how you want correspondence to you, any information. And I have a legal interpretation from our department that we have pulled down Commissioner Bile's information as he's requested, that they feel that we are, we are compliant as we are standing.
Okay.
They encourage me to talk with you all individually to make sure if you had any concerns, that we absolutely address them individually.
Okay.
Yeah, one point since I've started this. It's important to note that the, if you want your contact information on the county website, then you have to make a written request that that be done. It's not the other way around.
So, it is an opt-in, not an opt-out?
Right. In the past, it was always there. There was not, which is in violation of state law.
Okay.
So, it's, if you want it on there, you, you have to give them a written notification that you want it on there. And so, my suggestion is, as far as email goes, is we do what most, I looked at a bunch of other county websites and nobody has individual phone numbers or addresses or their personal emails as contacts listed on any website. They use a generic, you know, website related to the county itself rather than your direct email. So, that certainly can be done, but they're choosing not to do it. So.
That's all staff has.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions, Commissioner? Nope. Okay, so, report from the Board of Supervisors Planning Committee representative, and that is myself, and we did not have a meeting. How about a report from the Agricultural Advisory Committee representative? That's Dick and Dick's not present.
He's not present.
And I don't think they've had a meeting either, so.
I don't believe, I don't believe they had one either.
So, now we're going to move to election of officers.
Prove the minutes.
Oh, we want to do that first?
Well, that's the next one. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I stand corrected.
Perfect. All right.
He's jet lagged.
Yeah.
That's right.
So, does anyone want to have a discussion? Does anyone want to make any motions?
I was trying to get past that whole process.
Well, you're doing such a fine job. Just keep doing it.
Is that your motion then?
That's my motion, that Paul will be chair.
We've tried in the past to make sure that we roll folks through that position, right? And that may not be appropriate at this point, but at least if the vice chair should be someone, I believe, that has not, has not served as the chair yet, so that they have the opportunity, because it's kind of a tradition that the vice chair gets roped into the chair position next. And so, you kind of know that's coming and it's a chance to deal with it. And the occasions when the chairman's not there, it gives you a chance to practice a little bit.
Sure.
So, I would suggest that someone who has not been the chair, Charlotte, you have not been the chair, have you?
I have not.
Okay. That has been here, that would be an opportunity. And being that Charlotte's fairly senior, if you're interested in that position, I would recommend, I would suggest that we, I would nominate you as one of the potentials for that, if you're interested in serving in that role.
Thank you for your kindness. I would rather be chosen as vice president than second your nomination.
Okay. So, so what have I heard, right?
We got, we got a nomination for chair.
And then a second for chair?
Yes.
And then we have a nomination for vice?
That's correct.
So, let's start with chair. So, we got a nomination for one and then a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So, the chair is myself now.
Was that unanimous?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. So, now, let's move on to.
Vice chair?
Yes. And if you want to make a motion?
I'll make a nomination, I think, as if.
There you go.
I'll nominate Charlotte as our, our vice chair.
Okay. And do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay.
Who was the second? I'm sorry?
Mike.
Okay, Mike, okay.
Did we have any discussion? Does anyone want to make a second? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous for Charlotte being vice chair.
Thank you.
So, I just want, I think we also asked to ask the public for.
What, do we?
Any, any input, so if you do that.
For, then we'll go backwards to both?
Yeah, just, if there's anybody that wants to talk, I would recommend you.
So, we've done chair and vice chair. Does anyone in the public would like to make a comment?
Thank you.
Okay.
Remembering, of course, that anybody who gets up and speaks, most likely will get roped into doing.
Next to point E. Okay, so now we need to nominate and select two Board of Supervisors Planning Committee representatives. Does anyone have any nominations or want to self-elect themselves?
Could we nominate Mike?
Sure.
For?
Board of Supervisors Planning Committee.
Okay. Not sure what is involved in that, but.
Not much lately. There's been a time, you know, being the, the old guy here, I guess now, there's been a, there was a.
First you refer to her as senior, which I don't think you could do. First I was the old guy.
No, there was a time when the, this committee was very active and, and it was, there was a lot of work done into, all the general plan stuff all happened inside of that committee. And it was, in fact, the place where an awful lot of policy work's been doing. From my conversations with John lately, there seems to be some intent to move back that direction a bit, because they pulled away from that for one reason or another in, in the last few years. But it may end up moving to a point where it is a spot where policies are, are suggested, at least in that environment, which we, you know, we, we deal with it after it's already been put down on paper. Putting it down on the paper is something that happened inside the, the planning committee. So, it was, it was a lot meatier than the work that we do here, frankly.
Okay. That's fine.
Okay, so we got a nomination?
I'll second that nomination.
Who made the nomination?
I did.
Charlotte made the nomination. You're going to second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Need a discussion? Do we need open public?
Public comment?
Does anyone have any public comment?
Thank you.
Is that before I call for the ayes?
Please.
Got it. Public comment? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. And now I have a question for Larry and, sorry, one more time. Matt. Seeing Planning Committee and Agricultural Committee.
Do we, are you going, you only have one representative?
Right. And I'm going forward to that. I was going to, I was going to ask them if either of them had a preference, because it looks like we're about to head your way. Do either of you have a personal desire of agricultural or planning committee representative?
I'm happy to do it if no one else wants to.
Okay.
Question is, how, how often has both of those committees met in the last two months?
In the last two months?
And Larry, can you turn me on my?
I mean, how busy are they? How many times has the planning committee met in the last two months after the general plan was approved?
I believe they met three or four times last year.
Last year. Prior to the general plan being approved.
Yeah.
We met monthly.
It's infrequent, but I would say at least bi-monthly is what I would plan for. It could be quarterly.
When I served, we had a lot of, a lot of things going on at that point. At that time, we met monthly and sometimes we decided, it was scheduled monthly. And sometimes we chose to meet in between that because we felt like we could get things done. So, you have to be, I think you sign up, you have to say, well, I might end up getting in this thing for a month, on a monthly basis. In reality, lately, it hasn't been hardly any meetings.
That's correct.
And neither, the same could be said for the Agriculture Advisory too, because as far as I know, Dick is that.
Hasn't been in a while.
And, and he hasn't had a meeting in six months that I've.
That could become much more active.
Sure.
With the hemp discussions and the things that are going on.
Marijuana.
I, I don't know.
Okay.
But Dave, is the, is the regularly scheduled meetings, I know we've canceled them mostly, is monthly?
That is correct, for both of those items.
So, any of those?
Larry, what do you want to do? Cash in one way or the other?
I don't really have, I'm not a, I don't have an agricultural stakeholder type perspective. I'm not in agriculture, so I, maybe the alternate BOS PC?
Make a nomination for the main one, please.
Me?
We could always nominate your commissioners not here.
Well, you want to, you want to do the other one?
That's Dick's plan.
The Board of Supervisor Planning?
I, you know, that actually is not, frankly, I don't know whether that's a bad idea, having two growlanders in this, in that committee or not. But that being said, if we were going to do that, we'd be, we'd be able to save a bunch of commute time. If both of us go to the same meeting.
I nominate Jerry Baker for number two on Board of Supervisor Planning Committee.
There you go. A second?
Second.
Move this along.
Okay. Public comment?
Aye.
Seeing none, I will call all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye. And unanimous.
Thank you.
So, now we're going to do the alternate. And it sounded like we had a volunteer for that one.
Larry said he'd do that.
A little volunteer.
So, do you want to make a motion, Mike?
I'll make a motion that Larry be, the alternate BOS PC representative, that sounds so serious.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Okay. Public comment? Bringing it back to the board, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Unanimous decision. And finally, the Agricultural Advisory Committee representative.
What if we gave Dick that job?
He's already got that job.
I know. And he's doing such a fine job with it.
Want to keep it?
I don't know.
Is that, are you interested in that?
Keep me willing, I do.
I'm happy to do it.
Okay, let's do that.
Yeah, let's do it. Can someone make a motion?
That's a volunteer.
Do you want to make a motion, Larry?
Sure, I, I nominate, I'm sorry.
Matt.
I nominate Matt. The other new guy is the Ag Advisory Committee representative.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Yes. Second.
Okay, Charlotte seconds. Public comment? Bringing it back to the board, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous decision as well. Okay, we got through that. Thank you, everyone. And thank you for your public comment.
Thank you.
Are you being sarcastic?
No, we specifically clapped at one portion, so. All right. Finally, we're going to go to the minutes of the meeting of February 20th, 2019. Did anyone have any comments, questions, or motions?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve those minutes.
Okay, a second?
I second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm going to abstain.
And one abstention. Did you get that? Perfect. So, now we're going to move on to public comment. This is a time for anyone out in the public to have a comment on anything that's not on the agenda. And now I will open that up. Okay. Seeing none, I will close the planning commission business and move on to the public hearing. We have two items on the agenda tonight and let's start with staff's report.
I'm Natalie Rizzi and I'm the project planner for General Plan Amendment GPA 18-004 and Zone Change RZ 18-015. And the applicant is Guy Benning. And here are the vision, mission, and value statements as adopted by Tuolumne County, which we utilize for projects we receive. One value is that we encourage innovative and creative approaches. The project description. Resolution for General Plan Amendment GPA 18-004 to change the general plan land use designation of a 3.73 acre portion of a 5.21 acre parcel from rural residential to estate residential. And ordinance for zone change RZ 18-015 to rezone a 3.73 acre portion of a 5.21 acre parcel from RE5, which is residential estate five acre minimum, to RE2, which is residential estate two acre minimum. The general plan amendment and zone change are being requested to facilitate a re-subdivision to adjust property lines between two legal parcels. Following approval of the re-subdivision, there will be two parcels, which are 3.73 acres and 6.53 acres in size. The re-subdivision T 18-039 is not being considered at this time and will be handled by the county surveyor at a later date. The project site is located at 18836 and 18089 Providence Mine Road, approximately 900 feet east of the intersection of Providence Mine Road and Mount Eaton Road in the community of Tuolumne. Assessor's parcel numbers 062-090-65 and 062-090-66. The general plan designation of the project site is rural residential. And here is a map of the project site and surrounding parcels. The proposed RE2 zoning and ER designation are consistent with parcels directly west of the project site. Here is the exhibit map showing the area of the proposed general plan amendment and zone change and the property lines to be adjusted. This map also shows the existing open space which will be retained. Notices of the proposed project were sent via mail to 21 adjoining property owners on October 26, 2018. The Community Resources Agency received three response letters. One letter was in favor of the proposed project and two were in opposition. The letters in opposition did not cite any specific concerns or reasons for opposition. State law requires that Native American tribes be notified of any proposed changes to the general plan. The Native American Heritage Committee was contacted and they provided a list of three tribes with cultural places in the vicinity of the project site. These three tribes were sent invitations to provide comments on the proposed project. To date, no comments from the tribes have been received. Here are the required findings for the general plan amendment application. Evidence and staff's response for each point can be found in the agenda report. And here are the findings for the zone change application. Evidence and staff's response to each point can be found in the agenda report. In your decision process tonight for general plan amendment GPA 18-004 and zone change RZ 18-015, the Tuolumne County Planning Commission may either recommend to the board to approve the project, recommend to the board to approve the project with modifications, recommend to the board to deny the project, or send the project back to staff to work on. Are there any questions?
I have a question, actually.
I do have a question. You just said you only received two responses and one in favor?
Three.
Right, so three responses? Isn't there significantly more?
That's the, that's the other.
Is that the other?
That's the other one.
Yeah, I believe the Larson one had a lot of responses.
There it is.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Sorry. We're on board now. Okay. Any other commissioners have any questions? Seeing no questions for now, I will bring it to the public comment. We'll start with those in favor. We can move to those in opposition and also speaking neutrally. And if we have more speakers than that, we can do rebuttals and serve rebuttals. But first, we'll open it up to those who want to speak in favor of this project. Okay. Seeing no one speaking in favor, anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this project?
Wow.
Okay. Seeing none, any who would like to speak neutrally on this project? Okay. So, we'll close the public comment, public comment portion of this agenda item. Bring it back to the commissioners for questions for staff, any discussion amongst ourselves. Anyone have any comments? Seeing no questions or comments, does anyone have any decisions or motions or ideas?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the GPA 18-004 A through D and the zone change RZ 18-015 A through D.
Do we have a second? Okay. A second by Charlotte. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimously approved. With that, we will move on to the agenda item I referenced earlier. And start with staff reports.
Again, I'm Natalie Rizzi and I'm the project planner for Zone Change RZ 18-014. And the applicant is Melford Larson. And again, here are the vision, mission, and value statements as adopted by Tuolumne County, which we utilize for projects we receive. Project description. Ordinance for zone change RZ 18-014 to rezone a 0.213 and 0.214 acre parcel from R1 MX, which is single-family residential, mobile home exclusion combining, to RE5 MX, which is residential estate, five acre minimum, mobile home exclusion combining. The zone change is being requested to facilitate tentative parcel map T 18-038 to conduct a re-subdivision to adjust property boundaries between three legal parcels. Following approval of the re-subdivision, there will be three parcels of 5.0, 5.2, and 10.0 acres. Tentative parcel map T 18-038 is not being considered tonight and will be handled by the county surveyor at another time. The project site is located at 18775 Middle Camp Sugar Pine Road, east of the intersection of South Fork Road and Middle Camp Sugar Pine Road in Twainheart. Assessor's parcel numbers 40-120-06, 40-120-07, and 40-280-01. However, only APN's 40-120-06 and 07 are involved in the zone change. APN 40-280-01 is only involved in the re-subdivision with the two other parcels. The zoning on this parcel will not be changed. The general plan land use designation of the entire project site is low-density residential and rural residential. And here is a map of just the two parcels that are involved in the zone change. These parcels contain the low-density residential general plan land use designation. And here is a map of all three parcels and the surrounding parcels. And here is the exhibit map which shows the proposed property line adjustment between the three legal parcels. Notices of the proposed project were sent to 223 adjoining property owners on November 16, 2018. The CRA received a total of 10 response letters. Seven of the responses were in opposition, one response was in favor, and two responses were neutral. The letters in opposition raised concerns about traffic. Any new single-family dwelling constructed on the parcels would be required to pay traffic impact mitigation fees to mitigate their impact on the county circulation system. The letters in opposition raised concerns about unsafe access, specifically a driveway coming out at a blind turn. Any access onto or work within a county road right-of-way requires an encroachment permit to be issued by the Engineering Development Division. The purpose of the encroachment permit is to ensure that all connections with county roadways, including private driveways, allow for safe travel for those on the road and those exiting or entering a driveway. Site distance is factored into the decision to approve or deny an encroachment request. Concerns were also raised about property devaluation. Section 15064E of the California Environmental Quality Act, or SEQA, states that economic or social changes shall not be treated as a significant effect on the environment. The potential of this project to devalue nearby parcels would be considered a social or economic effect. Concerns were also raised about septic systems and their proximity to creeks or drainages. Future development of the site must comply with Chapters 13.04 and 13.08 of the TCOC regarding sewage disposal systems, which includes required setback distances from creeks and drainages. Additionally, proposed lots one and two are required to follow the requirements of soil testing to ensure viable soils for septic systems. Concerns were raised about the removal of trees. The project is not proposing any development or proposing to remove any trees. Prior to the cutting or removal of commercial species, a harvest plan and conversion of timberland must be reviewed and approved by CAL FIRE. Additionally, the project site must comply with Chapter 9.24 of the TCOC regarding the removal of native oak trees. Concerns were raised about water supply and the availability of water. APN 40-120-06 has a current water connection serviced by TUD. The project proponent will need to furnish information to TUD to determine if adequate capacity exists. Approval of the project would not result in an increase in the development potential and would therefore not result in an increased demand for water beyond what is currently Concerns were raised about the potential to divide the parcels again. Land divisions are handled by the county surveyor and would go through the discretionary process. Any potential environmental impact would be assessed. Additionally, proposed parcel one and two would require a zone change and general plan amendment prior to being able to be divided. Concerns were raised about the loss of a wildlife buffer. The maximum ratio of coverage on all buildings on parcel zone RE5 is 0.2, meaning the floor area of all structures on site cannot exceed 20% coverage of the lot. Additionally, due to slopes, riparian area, and easements, many areas of the parcels cannot be developed. Therefore, there will be sufficient area on the project site that will remain undisturbed and provide potential wildlife habitat and act as a buffer. Concerns were raised about the potential development of wetland, riparian, and drainage areas. These aquatic habitats may potentially be under the jurisdiction of state and federal agencies and additional permits may be required. Additionally, the project is not proposing any development and would not result in an increased development potential beyond what is currently permitted. No new impacts are expected. Concerns were raised about the loss of R1 zoning. Implementation program 1.AA of the general plan directs the county to provide an appropriate range of land use designations and to provide a balanced pattern of development. Approval of the project would provide a variety in the zoning district within the vicinity of the project site. Concerns were raised about fire safety. The existing single-family dwelling and any new dwellings are required to provide adequate defensible space and clearing to reduce fire hazards. Additionally, the project will not result in an increase in the number of single-family dwellings permitted and. dwellings permitted and would therefore not result in an increased potential fire hazard beyond what is currently permitted. Concerns were raised about hill and slope stability. Any future development must comply with chapter 12.20 of the TCOC regarding grading, erosion control, drainages, and slope stability. An erosion control plan is required for any construction to take place between October 15 and May 15 of any year. Finally, concerns were raised about the loss of a fire exit for Linwood Estates. An easement exists to the south of the project site, which may potentially be used as an access road for the Linwood Estates subdivision. Here are the required findings for the zone change application. Evidence and staff's response to each point can be found in the agenda report. In your decision process tonight for zone change RZ 18-014, the Toowalee County Planning Commission may either recommend to the board to approve the project, recommend to the board to approve the project with modifications, recommend to the board to deny the project, or send the project back to staff to work on. Are there any questions?
Commissioners, any questions for staff? Seeing none, we will go to the, oh, yeah, go ahead, Larry.
I really didn't understand the concern about the fire exit for Linwood Estates. What, there's an easement, but the easement, I don't see an easement on the exhibit map.
That's what I was just looking for, Commissioner. I do not see one on here. There may have been some old, and I did not see one on the old Linwood map. Did you see one?
Um, there wasn't an easement on the project site, but it was just south of that portion. There, I guess, was an easement through other parcels that I was able to find on a map.
Maybe the project engineer would want to address that, but it, I'm assuming the easement doesn't take it all the way out to Middle Camp Road in the direction of this, where the two small lots are, right? It's not that.
No, no, it was, um, I can try to.
It's on the exhibit map back up.
Yeah, so it was to the south of proposed parcel one and parcel two, and I think you can kind of see a portion of it on this map. Yeah. Below proposed parcel two.
Near, near where the ditch, below where that Salisburyville ditch is, is that where?
Yeah, yeah, I believe it's below.
Okay, well, it really has nothing to do with this zone change.
Yeah, not, yeah, I just, you know, there, there was a comment in the responses, so.
Well, we're almost there. We'll get to you, absolutely. Okay, Larry, anything else? Any other commissioners' questions? Okay, so first, we're gonna go to public comment, and we'll start with those who want to speak in favor, then in opposition, and neutrally. So, we'll start with those who want to speak in favor.
Good evening. Thank you, commissioners. My name is David Ragland. I'm the engineer and surveyor for the project proponent. Again, we're reducing the density on two small parcels in order to allow reconfiguration with a third one. Read some of the comments, and if I can alleviate some confusion, this is not a subdivision. There's no increase in parcels, there's no increase in single-family dwellings, there's no increase, the site, no site becomes buildable that wasn't already buildable, and there's no access point that we're creating that wasn't already available. All of those are subject to the future rules that they would go through for development, as would any possible future subdivision. But we're starting with three parcels, ending with three parcels, and I'm available for questions.
That's, David, that's slightly, it's a technicality, right? Because the, the three parcels you're talking about are the two smaller pieces and then the larger APN 40-280-01. Is that what you're saying? Because, I mean, when I look at the, the map, I see the, the larger sizable portion, and then there's the two pieces. Yeah. So, you're essentially saying we're getting rid of those two up top and creating, we're, we're not adding parcels, but you're creating three larger and reconfiguring.
Yeah, I mean, the way I like to look at it is if you draw a figure around the exterior of all my clients' holdings, we're moving the, the lines around among them. That's probably the right way to look at it. Of course, that's not specifically what we're hearing tonight. It's the fact that the zonings aren't compatible, so we're downzoning the small ones from R1 to RE5.
Thank you. Okay. Questions?
Mr. Chairman, I'd be interested in seeing the fire safety route on the, the map that we were, we're showing before.
I, I do not believe it has anything to do with these projects at all, and I am not certain it actually truly exists. So, there may have been a subdivision in the past that was done, and I believe it's called Lakewood.
Linwood, Linwood.
Linwood Estates. And there may have been something in the past was done, but there's nothing that I can see that has anything to do with this project that is being modified by it. So, just wanted to caution us to stick on the subject. There may be some other things that are there, but this project does not appear in any way to be shaped or formed to be affecting that.
Thank you.
Seeing no more questions from commissioners, anyone else who'd like to speak in favor? Okay, seeing none, anyone who'd like to speak in opposition? Okay, and anyone who would like to speak neutrally? Did you have a question, ma'am? This would be a good time, and please come on up to the podium to ask your question. Yeah, and just so everyone knows, you don't have to state your name, but you're welcome to.
I'm stating my name. I'm Ida Marcello, and I-
Please talk into the mic and then point.
It's not on my level.
There you go.
Okay, I'm Ida Marcello, and I own property, which is... Right here, that's my house.
Okay.
All right, so.
Please speak into the mic, I'm sorry.
My question is, the one that we're concerned with tonight, I understand, is just the 06 and 07, and I'm assuming it's this area. Is that correct? Is it that area?
It's becoming that area.
Yeah, okay, yes, if it goes to five.
06 and 07 are the two smaller.
Right.
At the top.
Right.
The two. The two little parcels at the very top of it, not where you were pointing.
Do you see 06 and 07 up there?
Somebody point for her.
It's these two small lots on Middle Camp, one of which has a house and one, and the other one is vacant.
Right, and I have looked at that. Now, it's going to extend to what looks like a shoe there.
Yes.
Yes, but it is not going to extend to...
No, and those become two other parcels.
Okay, now, those are going to stay at five each?
Five and 5.2.
Okay, okay. Is there going to be any changes with those at all?
I don't think we are discussing that today.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yep, thank you. Okay, anyone who would else to like to speak neutrally? Seeing none, I will now close the public comment portion of this agenda item and bring it back to commissioners and staff to ask questions amongst each other. Any commissioners? Questions, comments? None? I think that cleared up a lot of the questions. If there are no questions or comments, does anyone want to make a motion or?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I move, I move that we approve zone change RZ 18-014 based on findings A through D.
And a second?
Yes.
Charlotte, seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous decision. With that, I believe that's all of our agenda items, and I will close the April 3 planning commission meeting. Thank you for coming.
Well done, well done.